I'd like to call the planning and zoning and building committee, roll call please.
Alderman Art Woods.
He's here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Zasarski. Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods. And Alderman Catalano.
Here, we have a corpsman. Next, I need, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 10th, 2025.
Back out.
Any corrections to the minutes? If they are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation. A major adjustment to the existing planned unit development to amend to certain deviations for the indoor athletic facility, League One Volleyball at 650 North Wooddale Road. That is my motion.
Thank you.
Take it away, Director.
Thank you, Chairman Catalano. So this evening, we have a request before us for the property at 650 North Wooddale Road. The petitioner is Love Volleyball. It looks like Love, but it's pronounced Love. And this evening, we have with us Kelly Tamulonas, and she is the Club Real Estate and Facilities Director. And we also have Dennis Strand, who is the co-founding investor and vice chairman of the board, and they're here this evening, and they do have a presentation for you after I am done. So the subject property itself is located at 650 North Wooddale Road, which is right near the intersection with Hawthorne Avenue. The property is located in the I-1 Industrial District, but it also has the TCC Thorndale Corporate Corridor overlay. And the property right now is improved with 100,000 square foot industrial building that was completed in 2021. And the first occupant was Forward Space, the furniture company, but things are changing for them, the landscape, and they are moving out of a majority of the building. This was the Bridge Development or Bridge Point PUD that was approved in 2019. The subject property that we're talking about is this southern building. And in that PUD, the only uses that were listed were warehouse, industrial, and distribution, and office. So at the time, there was no contemplation that there would be a volleyball club or facility in here. And so the mechanism that you're hearing about tonight, maybe for the first time, is called a major adjustment to the PUD. So our city attorney has clarified for us that this is the method we would use for this request, and it does not require Community Development Commission review, just straight to council for approval. And that's why this request is before you this evening, of course. Attorney Bond is here this evening if there are any questions on that. So League One Volleyball has requested that major adjustment to the existing PUD with deviations to allow an indoor athletic facility, and that would be for youth volleyball training and for competition. They will be a subtenant of Forward Space. So Forward Space previously had the entire 100,000 square feet. Forward Space is reducing their footprint in the building to about 20,000 square feet, and that will be only for their warehouse operations. And Love is going to take over the remaining 80,000 square feet. And the volleyball courts will be in this 58,000 square feet that's up in the northern portion of the building. And in this southeast portion of the building, they're going to be using that for office and apparent waiting area. There'll be eight courts in the court area, six of which will be for the club itself that's relocating from Libertyville. And the other two will be for a potential pro team that I'm sure the Love team will talk about, that is very exciting opportunity for Wooddale. So regarding this pink 22,000 square feet, if we go to the next slide, that is, this is kind of a blow up or an expansion of just the 22,000 square feet. And they'll be using the blue area for parent waiting area. They have existing restrooms in the building. And then the yellow areas will be storage or janitorial or other places that are occupied by people for the most part. This area for Love Pro that I mentioned, that will be built out at a future date. There is no Chicagoland or Chicago Pro Love Team at this point, but they will be giving you a little bit of background on that when it's their presentation. So the parking deviation. So the code requires 378 parking spaces based on the proposed use. So that's for the facility itself, based on the parking ratios that are required in the UDO. And they're requesting to reduce that from 378 to 183, which is currently on the site. Now, that's a reduction of 195 spaces. But Love thinks they really only need, on a day-to-day basis, about 100 spaces. So they've got club kids already and teams that already operate in the area up in Libertyville. And those teams will be training here, and given those existing population that's relocating here, they think they need about 99 spaces. However, there are 10 spaces. The code requires 20 for the forward space warehouse area that is remaining. And that 99 spaces is assuming no tournaments happen at this location. Now, for this upcoming season, Love has confirmed that all of their tournaments will be off-site. They will not be held in Wooddale. So that 100 spaces that they'll be using should be good for the immediate future. However, we are suggesting that there be a condition when they do start tournaments about 12 to 18 months from now. And so staff is suggesting a condition, and I'll review the exact language on the next slide, but really what the gist of it is, is before they start holding tournaments, they need to come back to the city and give us a parking needs analysis. What is the maximum number of people that might attend these things? And then we have to make sure that they either have parking sharing agreements with the adjoining neighbors, or that they stripe more spaces on the lot so that we don't have any overflow into the streets, which impacts the surrounding neighbors. Now, shared parking agreements are actually a good, there's a good sharing relationship between this use and the industrial uses, because the industrial uses peak operation is usually during the workday, from, let's say, 8:00 to 5:00. There are some operations that do operate 24 hours, but for the most part, the industrial buildings are quiet on the weekend. The volleyball use, most of their practices are students, so they come in the evenings and on the weekends, so when the other spaces are vacant. So it's the perfect opportunity to share spaces with other existing users. So the Love team has talked to a couple of the adjoining property owners, and they're going to continue this. 555 Pond has given notice to the city that they are willing to enter into this parking sharing agreement as soon as, or if this project is given the necessary approvals. And I understand that there's also ongoing conversations with 610 Pond, and they are also willing potentially to enter into shared parking agreements. So I wanted to go back and show you where these were, but the computer is very slow. There it is. So this is 555 Pond, who's already committed to 50 spaces, and this is 610, where they're currently talking to another property owner who also indicated willingness to do that. So in summary, the request is for a major adjustment to an existing PUD to add indoor athletic facility as a permitted use in this PUD. So it doesn't mean that this use will be allowed anywhere in the industrial park or in the TCC overlay. It's allowed only for this PUD, which contains the 650 building and the 750 building that I showed you from the Bridge Point Development. And also grants them a parking deviation to reduce the number of spaces from the required 378 to the 183 that is currently on site. We are suggesting two conditions, that they provide the executed shared parking agreement with 555 Pond prior to occupying the space. And the second one is that they not hold tournaments on the site until they provide the city with an updated parking needs analysis and additional spaces to accommodate the need through additional striping and/or shared parking agreements as necessary, so we make sure that sufficient parking is required. I just realized I missed this bullet point. They do have the ability to stripe 30 additional spaces in the loading area. Obviously, this use isn't going to be using the loading docks, and similar to what was done with the property to the north, they also aren't using the loading docks, so they have striped passenger vehicle spaces in the loading dock area. There is room for 30 spaces to be striped in here, so that is an option for them to add more parking. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. The woman?
So Director Springer, with the two sites that have the shared parking, or one for sure with the shared parking and the other one that's pending, is there a need for additional shared parking agreement, or would that be enough to cover what's required?
Well, from the city's perspective, we think that that amount would be sufficient for now, but we still don't know what a tournament would look like. So, you know, they have tryouts, obviously. They have some summer clinics, they might have other events, they might have, you know, I don't know the operation, they might have internal, you know, teams competing against each other for fun or fundraisers. So that would be sufficient for the use now, but we'd still want to leave that condition in, that they come back and check with us. It could be sufficient for even the tournaments, we just don't know at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. The woman Messina?
I think it's just a comment. So I'm absolutely in favor of this. I've seen this trend towards the commercial space, both with the swimming school that my kids go to, and now their dance school, where they've grown out of space. And these facilities are in commercial spaces, so just more of an all-in-favor comment about it.
Alderman Curialy, go ahead. How will they direct parking to the off-site locations?
I would anticipate we'd make some sort of conditioner letter when they come back, and there needs to be signage that says, "Off-site parking here, no parking on the street."
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Two questions, one to the parking. Multiple points, right? We have the zoning code that says we're whatever, 195 short, and then we're looking to the occupants to come up with a plan, or not a traffic study, but a parking study of what their actual needs would be. So my concern, or the overall arching or reaching thought here is setting off the fail, saying, "Okay, we're agreeing to, you only need X amount of spaces." They do tournaments, then they need more spaces, they can't get the spaces, and then we're into this argument that we don't have any right to argue because we said you can run this facility, which is whatever, 200 spaces instead of 398. So that's my concern. What language are we using to safeguard or help fortify what they are? You know, not putting the cart before the horse, so to speak.
Attorney Bond, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I got, I got promoted. So what we would do is, again, under the code, because it is a PUD and it's a major adjustment to the PUD, you can dictate whatever the terms are. So we would put language in there, we're allowing for the parking as been represented, and in the event there are any tournaments, they would not be able to have those tournaments until they provided the city with the number of anticipated vehicles that would be necessary, and some type of an arrangement, whether it's a parking agreement with the other two properties if they've got additional space, or an additional property for some off-site, perhaps transporting it. They would not be able to simply expand because we gave them the number of parking spaces to operate the training type of a facility. They would not be allowed, as part of the conditions that you as a council would impose, they would not be allowed to hold tournaments there unless and until they made parking arrangements that could come back to you for your final approval.
Right, so I get, just to comment on that. So that's what I'm trying to safeguard against, putting them in a spot where they can go to a certain threshold and then can't execute their ultimate plan. So I'm assuming that you guys have or have dealt with other facilities, and that number's ascertainable, right? We can figure that out, that we can kind of put that in the language. I don't want to box, create language that boxes us in and then causes you guys headaches or problems.
If you want to go up to the...
In the future. I'm all in favor of having the program.
The only thing I wanted to mention is, we aren't anticipating that they need to prepare, submit a traffic study or that type of thing. What they've provided already is kind of a breakdown of how many teams, how many players, how many parents, and so that's what we'd be looking for, is how many, what would be the maximum number of teams that would come, how many people would come with them, but it doesn't need to be a professionally prepared study.
I retract the correct study statement.
Okay.
Misspoke, wrong word, but a study of their use, is parking needs, that's it.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can I let me respond to your question?
I'm okay with that.
Just to state who you are.
Oh, sorry. I am Kelly Tamulonas, I'm with League One Volleyball. So just to go to that topic, we, not having parking for a tournament is very bad for our business. So let's say we have the parking on-site and the shared parking agreement with one or two or three of the neighbors, and we know then how many parking spaces we need, we would then, if we have tournaments at this facility, we would plan the tournament around that many courts. So we wouldn't max out the facility if we didn't have the parking for it. So instead of an eight-court tournament, we would have a four-court tournament. And then, you know, and so there's flexibility there to be able to hold those events to the capacity of the property. Or what we have at our disposal.
Gotcha, fair enough.
Okay, go ahead, Director.
Chairman, I was going to say, now that they're up there, maybe you would want them to proceed with their...
Yes.
Hold on. There we are. Before I click through this, we just put together a little slide because not a lot of people know what League One Volleyball or Love is, so this is just a pretty quick way to get to know us as a group and really what we stand for, and who we try to serve, and how we try to serve our growing community.
His Love. It's a vibrant volleyball family with junior athletes across the country who are the heartbeat of our community. Our clubs are also the foundation of our pro league, where we're creating pathways to play professionally in the U.S. Players and Love coaches each receive full hands-on support. Our junior athletes have the opportunity to participate in camps led by Love Pros and NIL athletes, work with the top coaches in volleyball, and also receive expert support with college recruiting, guidance on nutrition, and mental health support. Parents can have peace of mind knowing Love Club coaches are state sport certified and receive background checks. All of this is just a small snapshot into how we help support our junior athletes to follow their dreams on or off the court. When you are part of a Love Club, you are part of the largest family of volleyball clubs in the country. Love is for youth, Love is for pro, Love is for life. Join it.
So a little video just showing some of our, well, actually, a lot of the women that you saw in that video were our pro athletes, and we just finished our inaugural pro season. We have six pro teams across the country already. And this is just, again, explaining a little bit about it. If you read the narrative letter that I put together, I took this snippet on the left right from our website, and it really just describes that, you know, Love is a holistic volleyball ecosystem from club to pro. These girls that are in a facility that, the youth athletes that get to partner in a facility with the pro players really get to play next to professionals, so they can see them coming in and out of the gym, and they interact a lot, and it's really, it's really great, it's really exciting. Coming from a former volleyball player or youth volleyball player, that would have been the coolest thing ever. So, you know, this is providing an opportunity for these youth athletes to really see the bigger picture. Let's see. So right now, just a snapshot of how big we are, we have, we have over 17,500 players and athletes that are playing for Love Clubs. We have 67 locations, 26 states, 3,000 coaches, 60 clubs, some of our clubs have more than one location. 15 of our clubs are currently in the top 100 in the country, and we have one training center so far.
If I could add, yeah, on that, on that previous chart, there's around 4,500...
Could you go to the podium? Thank you.
Just to give a little bit of market sizing here, there's about 4,500 youth clubs across the country. So we're at 60 today. Our goal as a company is to be around 200 clubs, either buy or build, and that's going to be our kind of sizing of quality that we're looking to do in the marketplace.
Some of the perks of being with Love from a youth or junior athlete perspective, they get the guidance on nutrition and mental health support, it's something that's talked about a lot. College recruiting, should a youth athlete have the ability to be recruited by colleges? We have someone in-house that helps them and their family through that process that can be pretty daunting. It is a pathway to pro, so, you know, we can see these athletes who might have what it takes to make it into the college and even to the next level, and, you know, they can stay at home, if you will, play in America, but also stay with Love overall. The facilities that we have are premium, and we follow a very strict, like, safe sport guidelines in all of our facilities. We have access to the top coaches from what we call a new build, which is clubs that don't currently exist, that we just go to a city and build a club there. We have former college coaches coming to us saying, "I'm moving to this city, and I'd like to open a club with you guys." So that's pretty exciting. We do the pro academy camps and clinics, you saw a little bit in the video, and we're able to offer financial aid for kids who just can't, or, you know, their families aren't able to help them get into the club world. We will be able to provide that for them. There are mindset journals that talks about over there, where the girls sit down and they, you know, it's a prompted writing response, but it's more than just volleyball. It's, you know, it's working with a team, and it's setting, you know, it's providing them with skills that will last the rest of their lives. And then this just shows you that 590 is the number of Love Club athletes that were recruited to play in college in 2024. And then, on average, annually, 200 to 400 are recruited to play in college. Just a, kind of a lineup of some of our pro athletes that played in our clubs. With the inaugural season, we went overseas, and we tried to bring some of the women who were playing overseas but have families here, we tried to bring them back and give them an opportunity to play at home, but these are some of the women that grew up in some of our clubs. This slide just talks a little bit about the club and the pro integration, and what it means to have access to professional athletes when you're a young volleyball player. They get to do jersey swaps at the games. They can write Love Notes to their favorite professional athletes and get the response right away. And then there's an ambassador program, which, sorry, I have a really bad neck today, that provides our junior athletes with more value, more value as being, as being a part of the Love community. Just a couple pictures, and then one thing we wanted to highlight here is Adversity. Adversity is the club that we would like to move into the Wooddale facility. They are a strong, nationally-known volleyball club, founded in 1999, they have 20 girls teams. They have a scholarship program in place for players, and at the end of last year, they were 73rd in the country. They have an amazing reputation throughout the country, and the leaders of Adversity, and one of the reasons why they're so successful, are the club directors, Kyle and Melissa Masterson. And this just lists out their volleyball resume, the pro, college coaching, both lifelong players. So they are very well-known and respected within the overall USA volleyball community. And they will be the ones operating the club out of the North Wooddale facility if so approved.
If I could just add a couple things?
My name is Dennis Strand, and I'm one of the co-founders of League One Volleyball. I've been here since day one. I just want you all to know, I was introduced to my wife here in Elk Grove Village. I'm from Wisconsin, I met her in Elk Grove Village, we've been married 38 years, and I currently live in North Barrington. So I'm part of your community as well, too, so I'm not that far away. And I just want you guys, I just wanted to share that with you all, okay?
So that's, you know, the videos and the slides are a little bit about, you know, Love and who we are. We have wanted to find a home for Adversity because in their current location, they are, you know, outgrowing it, it's not that nice of a facility. And after our inaugural pro season, we have plans to expand our pro teams in the coming years. And Chicago has been identified as an amazing place to have a pro volleyball team. And so back in January, I flew in town to try to find a facility, and, you know, we were looking at big, open, you know, big, just bare bones warehouses, and they were great. And then the broker involved with the Forward Space Building said, "I just want you to see something." Well, you know, I don't know if it's going to turn into anything. And myself, Kyle Masterson with Adversity, and another one of our colleagues walked through the building, and we were just, I mean, the ideas coming out of all of our heads are endless. The way that the office space sits will be largely unused until we expand into the Chicago market with a pro team. But we're willing to take that chance because this facility is so nice. I know parking is our main thing here today, and it has more parking than I think any facility we have across the country. So for us, it checks every single box, and, you know, parking is something that we consider everywhere we go for anything that we do, because if we can't park the people that are coming, I certainly don't want to drop my kid off, and then, you know, well, I drop my daughter off the volleyball all the time. But they, I think they have 10 parking spaces, they have four courts, and so you can't stay. But parents coming to Adversity, they drive sometimes an hour or more to get their daughter to volleyball, and then they have to drive home. So they're not going home. They're going to go to the Target that's close by, or to the grocery store, and they're going to do their shopping, they're going to have dinner in their community, they're going to become part of Wooddale. So that's another reason why we don't need a ton of parking, because our, every age group, 15 and under, they can't drive. And oftentimes, they try to carpool. So, you know, maybe if we have 10 kids on a team and a coach, that's 11 people, we probably would use three or four parking spaces for that team. would use three or four parking spaces for that team for that night of practice. So, if, if when we're full, we have six courts, we'll have six teams practicing, and if, even if they're our driving age, then every kid drives themselves and the coaching staff, that's 99 spaces. And we probably wouldn't have the 18s, 17s, and 16s all in the gym on the same night. So, there's a lot of things we can do to make sure that we are well within the parking numbers that we have on our site. And then for tournament parking, we would, like, back to the point I made, we, we would not host a tournament that would exceed our parking capacity. And we can provide you with those numbers on, you know, the estimated, you know, it's the number of teams and how many people are on those teams, and then, one, the, the math that we typically use is 1.5 people per athlete. Some people are going to have one seat, like, some people are going to have two, some people are going to have none, so we just decided that's kind of the, how we're going to figure that out. So, with, you know, quick math, if we're doing a four-court tournament, and there's four teams per tournament, times that by the 10 people for, per team and one and a half spectators, that's the number we would be looking at. We do, I have the lease in my inbox for the 555 building, I have a verbal commitment from 610 Pond for their parking spot, and we're in talks to figure out how it's going to work with 750, the building to the north, that has a ton of parking. They are concerned because they do run weekend hours sometimes, and so they don't want to commit parking to us and then have to, to work, but I think they're working on scaling their numbers so that they can identify certain parking spaces that we could use on a weekend that we're having a tournament. Our tournament business is typically planned out well in advance of the season, so the 26 tournaments are already almost completely booked, so, we don't really have to worry about that.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. We have some questions here. Alderman Sizmarski, go ahead.
Do you have a motion on the floor or no?
Yeah, we have, we have a, a motion and a second. No, no questions, or, okay. Alderman Woods, and then we'll go, go ahead.
I think she had it.
Okay.
She might have been first.
All the woman names, go ahead.
I'll take it. So, thank you for your presentation and for introducing this, I had never heard of this before, and I think it's an exciting opportunity for the city, and I have seen, as Alderman Messina mentioned, some other sports in industrial areas. I know my son participated in archery, and, and my daughter gymnastics, too, that were in industrial parks, so that was interesting, but it's a great use for space. I know we're talking about parking spaces tonight, but I had a, just a general question about the, the facility itself, and I know that tournaments are not going to take place in 2025, should this go forward, but looking forward, I, I would just think, do you need locker rooms in here, and are the restrooms big enough to accommodate potentially all these people coming?
Yes. So, typically, we have a, a one restroom, or one stall per court guideline for facilities, and the building has seven stalls in the women's, and then, the equivalent of, I'm not sure, stalls to urinals in the, in the men's, and then there is a single stall out in the warehouse that would be used. So, if, when we go to an eight-court facility, that does match our numbers, but if we have a tournament, the pro courts would be off limits. So, that then increases, or is better for our ratio of courts to stalls. And locker rooms, no, they're really not, what they, what they do, so if you're not playing, let's just say there's one court, there's four teams, and then they're in a pool. If they're not one of the two teams playing, one of the teams is reffing, and that means that the girls are being line judges, doing the, the scoreboard and keeping all the books, and being the down referee. So then you'll have a handful of girls to kind of hang out while they're not playing, and then if you're just sitting, it's something called camping, where there's just a designated spot for a team, and they have, they throw down their blankets, and they throw down their bags, and they all just kind of hang out together as a team. So, and, and with the, the ample space that we have in this building, especially in the, in the office side of the building, I foresee that being a large camping area.
Okay. Thank you. I just thought of some kind of a changing facility or something like that, so it doesn't sound like that's needed.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, since the attorney's here, I don't want to waste time, I have a few questions. But could you just touch on the minor versus major amendment, and you used the word adjustment as that, or we don't have to go from here?
Right. You've got, under your code, provision 17205 provides, because you're the, the ultimate body that approves the PUD. It goes through a process, when it goes to the CDC, ultimately comes to, before you, so it makes sense that you're going to be, if there's a substantial deviation from the, what was approved, that comes to you to say, one, will we accept that, and two, if we do, what conditions are we going to put on that? So, the difference between the major-minor is, is it a, and the statute, our code specifically says, has it been varied, altered, subject to, that it is a substantial deviation from the, the plan? So, if that is the case, and the language adjustment is what is, what is accounted for, so you're not, you're not deleting or, or refusing the PUD, you're simply making an adjustment to the PUD to allow for whatever the, you're seeking, and in this case, it's an additional use, which the original PUD was not authorized for. So that's the distinction, and it comes back to you, which makes sense from a, a procedural standpoint, because ultimately, since you as a council approved it, you as a council should be the ones to decide if you're going to allow for that adjustment, and again, what, what conditions you wish to impose on that.
And I'm a for this, so this conversation doesn't matter. Future knowledge for me. So, the, a minor, my understanding is staff going to approve a minor amendment or adjustment, not even having this, so what triggers that threshold, I guess is what I'm trying to...
Okay. The major adjustment, I'll read it straight from the code, is an adjustment to the final plan that was not authorized at the original one. The major adjustments granted on application to the city council. In terms of what constitutes a, a minor adjustment, there's a, it's provided for in the code as well, it, it's a minor adjustment to final plan is necessary in light of technical or engineering considerations. In other words, you're not, it's not a wholesale change of the use, you're just tweaking it to make it apply for that particular, and those are limited to altering the location of one structure or group of structures, altering the circulation location and so forth. So, those are more kind of internal operational aspects of it, as opposed to, this is, you're saying this use was not originally part of the, the PUD, we are going to expand the PUD for that purpose, and that's what makes it a substantial deviation with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation, and guess we need a roll call on that?
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes, welcome to Wooddale. Okay. Thank you to Director. Next is items to consider at future meetings, we have the Wooddale Park District text amendments, rezoning, and lot consolidation, May 8th. Any other items to consider at future meetings? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
For the meeting of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee, let the minute taker note that the same council members remain present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 27, 2025, of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee minutes.
To move.
Thank you. All in fa, or any adjustments, corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We have one item tonight, resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for specific police services. I'll make that motion.
Say that again.
Any, Chief, did you have any, or Deputy Chief, do you have any comments?
I don't have a presentation like Director Springer, so I apologize for that, but this is a agreement, an agreement that we've, we've done over the years, and we're just continuing a very similar agreement.
Okay. Any questions?
So, there's no?
Alderman Sizmarski?
So, there's no changes whatsoever?
From my understanding, there's nothing different from the last time.
Okay. Do you have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
That passes. Yes. Thank you. Items to be considered at future meetings, there are none listed, anybody care to add anything? Alderman Woods?
I have a second.
No? Later? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you. I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, same members are still present, they need a motion to approve the minutes of April 10, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, item number one, approval of an agreement with Chicagoland Pavings for the fiscal year 2026 pavement patching program in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Oh, you're getting off easy.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, update to Chapter 6 of the municipal code of the City of Wooddale. Do you have a presentation you want?
I have just a brief explanation.
Go ahead.
So, last year, the city received funding from the Morton Arboretum's Chicago Region Trees Initiative, and this funding, we're able to use it for citywide tree inventory, we're able to use it for the urban forest management plan creation, and then we're also able to use that funding if we want to purchase any planting materials. Part of this program requires that the municipality has to update their tree, comprehensive tree ordinance to include certain requirements for just the preservation of the canopy and, you know, to put in different penalties or other items to protect the parkway trees. And with this ordinance, then we would be able to apply for annual funding, so the Morton Arboretum has funding every year, it's, sometimes it's a little higher, sometimes it's a little lower, and we would be able to use it for those items that I previously mentioned. So, if we wanted to do a tree inventory every three years, we could apply for this funding. If we wanted to purchase, you know, plant material, we could use it for that as well. Some of the changes to this ordinance included adding new definitions and updating the definitions, granting the Public Works Director his designee more clear discretion to enforce the ordinance, requires clear insurance requirements for any contractor doing tree work in the City of Wooddale, further refined penalties if a parkway tree is removed, there's no permit applied for it, and then adding an appeals section for the enforcement of the ordinance. And this is separate from the tree preservation ordinance that is for private developments and properties, this is for public parkway trees. Any questions?
Do we have a motion? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the updates of Chapter 6 of the municipal code of the City of Wooddale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? No questions? Oh, Alderman Currielli? I have a question. You were, we're using an arborist to make some determinations about trees, have we ever considered using a landscape architect or urban forester to make a decision, what having more to do with the aesthetics of the trees and the tree placement? Should we have?
Yeah, so that would be included in the urban forest management plan. We do have an arborist on staff that goes and identifies the specific areas of, you know, where a specific tree species would work best, or making sure that trees are spaced correctly, so, you know, they have a good look, or, you know, they're not dying off quickly for all the roots that are growing in the area. So, again, that's the urban forest management plan, which I believe will be coming to you guys for a review, it's currently, we're editing it with the contractor who's working with us on it, but that would be better outlined in the management plan.
Follow-up?
No.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be referred to future meetings, metro parking lot resurfacing, May-June fiscal year 26 salt purchase, May-June HVAC services agreement in June, anything else? We need a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, no opposed, right?
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting, if the minute taker can note that the same members are present. I would like to make a motion to table the minutes from, well, I'm not really sure what the meeting date, right? There was a Attorney Bond, if you could comment, or Director Wilson on the minutes?
Yeah, the, you've got on your, in your packet, the minutes from January 23, 2025, Finance and Administration Committee minutes, you have had a committee meeting since then, so you can take those up at your next committee meeting for approval.
So, anything to add? So, do we just?
We need a second.
Second on the motion to table and a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is table. I do have four report and recommendations. The first is Wooddale School District 7 TIF funding request. Director Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yeah, so before you, this evening, the first two items are generally the same, aside from geography and taxing body. They're both TIF requests, TIF funding requests for building improvements, the one you just mentioned is for school district 7, Junior High, the item next on the agenda is for the Park District, their main facility there on Foster. Both of those facilities are within the TIF district, the expenses that they're requesting TIF funding for are eligible expenses, we've talked to the TIF attorneys, there's no issues there. Would just like to point out, as was stated in the memo, the only other time we've done a reimbursement for a taxing body was back in 2000 for an ambulance with the Fire District, and we did that at a rate of 50% of their initial ask. You know, I, I don't know if that was a precedent, or if we're going to set precedent tonight on what that is, but that's the only history for taxing bodies that we can go off of. Would point out that typically when businesses come in, we don't give them 100% of what they ask for. Again, that's just a, a general statement, I'm not taking a side or stating which, which way anything should go on this, I'm just stating what past practice has been for those particular requests, and there are representatives from both taxing bodies here this evening to address any questions that you may have, and so, I guess overall, we're looking for direction as to funding for this item, and then obviously, the Park District's the next item. We have heard that, I believe, the Fire District will likely be coming in asking for some funding for renovations to their facilities sometime, probably later this year, and the library is technically in the TIF, so they could, in theory, come in and ask for funds for their facility as well, so just kind of, trying to get all of that out there, and again, not, not taking a side or prognosticating, just stating what we've done in the past for previous developments. And turn it back over to you, I'll answer any questions, and like I said, for anything related to their specific projects, I would likely defer to the representatives from the taxing bodies behind me.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sizmarski?
Yeah, what's the current taxing on the, what is the current tax due to citizens on this school right now? What is the percentage that we pay, or that people pay to them? Maybe the school board director can...
What are you saying, the percentage of their tax bill?
What is the percentage of the tax that goes to the schools from the, from the residents? You're asking for money, we already pay a lot of money in school taxes already, what is the taxing amount?
I don't know the exact right now, Dr. Corbett, do you know?
It's not your...
I have that number, I have come through.
Of course not. I'm just asking, because you're asking for money, but I'm just asking what, what the percentage of tax money we already paid to them. They're asking for money, I want to know what we already paid to them in taxes, as school, as residents.
Is that, is that something that we can get later from the school district?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I just...
I don't know.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I just, I don't have the, unfortunately, I may shock some of you, I don't have the breakdown of all the taxing bodies' percentage, you know?
You don't have to memorize?
I mean, I know the school districts are the largest chunk, and then it goes down from there, but I don't know what that, actually what that percentage is at this point in time. Easy enough to get, but I just don't have it right now.
Well, it'd be nice to have, that's all.
Alderman Art?
Yeah. My question, I mean, this is something that typically happens, right, in TIF districts, that other taxing bodies come and reach out and ask for their fair share, since the argument is they're losing revenue, all that. My only question is, as the taxing bodies come, right, there's a finite number of dollars to spend, so how do we determine that? As you just said, the Fire Department's going to come, the library possibly could come, right? And to be fair to all, so the number probably isn't 100%, I'm just, I guess what I'm trying to get across is I'm uncomfortable this evening going, hey, 50% sounds good, because I don't know what any of the numbers are. Maybe 50% is crazy, maybe 75% is a better number, maybe 42% is the number. I don't know, so unless you're able to tell us all those numbers tonight, I'm uncomfortable even giving you a suggestion, if that makes sense.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Oh, that was, Alderman Woods kind of hit on what I was asking. There's requests there, but there's no numbers. It's just blank.
Well, the number is in, they're asking for the entire cost of the project, this is for the school district, for $713, $713,405 for the cost of the project.
13 bucks, I'll give it to you. Right, it's in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
The request is in there.
So they're asking for 100% of that, so. And Alderman Messina, did you have?
Alderman Woods alluded to it, I was going to address the fact that the number is in the packet, and that fact that it is, it is 100% the request that they are asking for. My, my, I guess, remaining comment that no one has said is, is there a way to do like a step funding where we don't have to commit to the full dollar amount? And it kind of depends on how good the TIF goes, like, I'm in favor of doing that, but, I mean, without those numbers, right, it's kind of hard, right? I would love to give them 713, 713K, but like, I also don't know what that means in the big bucket of money. Does that make sense? No?
Director Wilson?
I'll defer to Alderman Woods and then.
Alderman Art?
I'm just going to pull the pieces in, so if you tell me we have 20 million sitting there, I have no problem giving them what they're asking for. But if you tell me the number is like 1,008, then we have an issue giving those numbers, and it's really that simple. I can't give, you know, it's like my own bank account, unless I know what the balance is, I can't write the check. If I know what my balance is, I'm able to write a check, and I know how much I can write that check for, right? And so the complication then is there's a product of what that increment could possibly be, because that's, we don't know that yet either, right? So, over the time, so maybe Alderman Messina's idea of an incremental thing as we move along is a better way to, I don't know, I'm just, I need more information to be able to, I'm in favor of doing it, I just don't know at what level.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, so I've been asking a lot of these questions, I believe the TIF fund right now has about $6 million, if I got the right number, is that correct, Brett?
Director Wilson?
Accounting for current obligations, as of today, that is a roughly accurate number, yes.
The other questions I had was, so what else needs to be done in this area? Because I believe we only have, what, 12 years, 13 years left? What else needs to be done, we need to figure out, I mean, I know the Fire Department, it was a smaller ask, half of 300,000 is definitely a lot cheaper than half of 700,000 and a million one. And then, some taxing bodies do put more in because they collect more from all the other, you know, some pay more, some, again, it's all proportionate, right? So, I was looking at the math, if we do 50%, because we did it with the Fire Department, this would be about, I don't know, 850,000, still leaving us $5 million. I asked, is there some bill that I haven't seen, or, and we don't have one hanging in the balance, right, there's always something that might come up. Right, there's nothing that.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, the only other known thing at this point in time is the water tower.
Right.
And just when we get those bids back, we'll just have to make a determination, you know, if we feel like we could pay the majority of it cash, or if we want to do the bond issue for it, and run out the string with the rest of the TIF with the Public Works building. At this point, that's the only other known project, or, I guess, commitment, if you will, that's out there. Again, it's really a function of the unknown, we don't know, you know, I don't think any of us expected there to be a volleyball club coming in two months ago, you know, so we don't know who could come in next month and want to rehab one of the buildings that might ask for money, so practically speaking, it were, I guess the TIF's in a good spot, but it's kind of the unknown, and then, you know, the other taxing bodies, so. Yeah, so right now, it's just the water tower, the remaining dead service on the Public Works campus, and then the only other infrastructure work, I talked to Director Lang, he said there might be some resurfacing and a couple of other minor projects, but we redid the lift station, we redid the booster station, so the bigger stuff, in theory, is already done.
Yeah, so, I did speak to Mr., our Director Lang, and asked him, we need to exactly put a number to all this stuff, so, you know, when these things come up, because, let's say we give the money this evening, the Fire District comes back in a month, or two months, and the library comes back, and the high school comes in, or whatever. Can we say, then, do we set a precedent, maybe it's an attorney question, we set a precedence, gave everybody 50%, now we're going to tell these other groups, sorry, I don't know, I don't know how that's going to work, but, I mean, we're all in this together, and collaboration is always nice.
Mr. Murph?
Yeah, I was just going to add a little into what Director Wilson said, unfortunately, a lot of this is going to be unknown the whole time, I think we can't anticipate what future projects are going to be from the taxing entities, it's not our job to do that. These two entities, along with the Fire District, well, the Fire District had good timing, these two entities have good timing right now, because we do have a healthy fund balance, we have some large liabilities sitting out there with the water tower, which is a big expense, we want to make sure we hold over funding for these unforeseen items that could pop up, and at the same time, we want to, obviously, we do have some funds right now, I don't think 100% of a project is good, under any circumstances, for any applicant, consistency seems to be good, so I don't think there'd be a problem right now with the 50% of the ask, if you wanted to do 100, you could, that could cause future problems, I don't know, I wouldn't recommend it, but right now, the fund is healthy for our future expenditures, there are 50% of their costs, and then we would have leftover contingency money in case anything were to pop up on the immediate horizon, but we're not going to be able to forecast past that, so we're not going to have any more answers than we would already have tonight for a lot of these questions.
Alderman Art Woods?
The lot done back. Again, I'm in favor, so then, how does this work? We say yes, and we come with a check tonight for the money?
Director Wilson?
Yeah. You know, so, whatever we come up with here this evening, we would have our TIF attorney in conjunction with Mr. Bond's office, work up an IGA between ourselves and the taxing body, and then we would do it on a reimbursement basis, just like we would do any other agreement with the TIF or whatnot. The school district, it's my understanding that that project has been completed already, so that one would probably be a pretty quick turnaround. The Park District is my understanding that those projects have not been completed, so that one, once we got a number agreed upon, again, would be on a reimbursement basis, not to exceed them out, and then we would work with them going forward as they're completing their particular projects. So we treat it just like we would, you know, a private entity or anything, the CIT project, the RKC project, it would be similar nature to those, it's just be dealing with the taxing body instead of the private business entity.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, just for clarification, the mayor had indicated whether or not there's a precedent that's set, and as you've seen, it's sort of moving parts, if you grant the request in whole, or in part, to one of these taxing bodies, obviously, that then reduces the Art Woods checking account, or savings account, whatever the money's in. So, it will be, that number will be different, so you're not setting a precedent if you did the park district at 50%, you're not then mandated to do 50% for all taxing bodies, you take a look at the projects, and you as council, make a determination as to the, what's available, what funds are available, what funds are still necessary for those commitments that the city has to address with respect to that, and then make a determination as to how much of that request then you would grant, that doesn't bind you or require you to make the same percentage grant of those funds to another taxing body, you can do it on an individual case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Alderman Art Woods?
Yeah, as a follow-up, one, so, I'll make a motion to approve up to 50% of the ask, contingent on, on council and city attorney approval of the funding and project.
Second.
I just want to clarify, is that for both TIF requests?
For both.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to, should we like start a battle out there? I don't have a favor in the audience.
Separately, you can't do both.
Alderman Messina?
Hey, still go back to what I said, I mean, is it uncommon, or is there a way to do like a step increase, where it's, okay, we'll give you, we'll give you, we'll do the 50%, we agree to that, but as we improve, we give a commitment to that next, whatever, 20% or 25%? Done.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, you can, I wouldn't recommend it, though, because you may have, let's say the water tower gets shifted to a new location at the last minute with the additional cost, now that money that you've committed at this point is not available to disperse to the other taxing bodies, so it's better off if you, if you can leave it open and say, come back to us for the balance of funding, or for additional funding on these projects, you certainly can do that, but you're not binding the funds which may necessarily be encumbered by other, other projects.
Follow-up?
Quick follow-up, so, I guess that was my question, right? There's no limit on when they can, how often they could come back, or when they could come back?
Attorney Bond?
No, as long as it's TIF-eligible expense, then that would be something that you would give consideration to.
Okay, thank you.
That having been said, I don't know if that's an invitation to come back, but that's legally you're permitted to do so.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, again, that's what I was saying, depending on how much money we have and whatnot, right now, we have $6 million, and it seems to be enough, but, again, we don't have all the unknowns, and that's why I asked Mr. Lang, I go, maybe you guys' staff should start looking this stuff over, because there is only 13 years, was it, left? So we want to make sure everything's covered, that needs to be covered, because the Fire Department probably going to come in for something, I heard they want to do something to their building. Again, and the library may do something, we want to be fair, and try and be fair to everybody, but there's only so much money, and we want to make sure that things that need to be covered are done first. And, and then my other question was to Mr. Wilson, so if we have this $6 million that say left at the end of the TIF, and we're done, the money gets sent back to those taxing bodies proportionally how they put it in, so they get it back, and I asked, can we, if we get done with our stuff that needs to be done, maybe we can shut the TIF off two or three years earlier, I don't know, those are questions that have to be looked at, but, again, 50% is fair right now, but I asked Mr. Bond specifically, if somebody comes in six months and something popped up that we didn't expect, we might have to say no, unfortunately, but we're going to try and say yes.
Alderman Art Woods?
No question.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second? Alderman Art?
No, we need to read.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be just to do it separately, and so you've got a, the motion, if the mover concurs, would be 50% as to the, the school district, 50% as the park district, that would be done in two different motions.
I concur.
I concur, too, yes.
Any other question? Oh, Director Wilson?
Yeah, just a quick comment, because we didn't know basically how this was going to go tonight, this will not be on next week's agenda, it's going to take us a couple weeks to get everything put together, so just full disclosure for everybody, you will not see this next week. Likely the May 15th meeting will be on that particular agenda, by the time the documents get drawn up and everything.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? So, we'll do a roll call on the, the first item for District 7 TIF funding request?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next is the Wooddale Park District TIF funding request? Oh. I'll make a motion for the Wooddale Park District TIF funding request?
Second?
Second. 50%.
50%.
To 50%.
Second.
Better procedure, so Alderman Woods amended his, so he had both motions, he had made the motion as to both, they were just segregated, so there's already a motion, and Alderman Catalano had seconded, so you're on the discussion portion.
Roll call?
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Art, I'm sorry, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, yes.
And that passes. Next is a report and recommendation for City Hall interior renovations from FGMA design proposal. Do we have a presentation on that, or just?
Roll call.
Director Wilson?
Moving to the clock.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yes, we have, before you hear this evening, and again, the next item is kind of a companion item, if you will, to this particular one. We have design services for the City Hall renovation project, as I'm sure you're all acutely aware, the Police Department has been undergoing some renovations over the last year, year or so, and the design architect on that was FGMA. So we, at this time, would like to move over to this side of the building, the admin wing, finance, CD, administration, obviously, this room we're in right now, executive session. We did put money in the CIP for the design of this project this year, so we have before you this evening is the proposal from FGMA for the design scope for this project. One of the, I guess, the, the benefits of going with FGMA is since they did the PD project, they kind of know what to expect on this side of the building, relative to what's kind of, you know, lurking, you know, in the walls, outside, windows, things of that nature, so it just, it kind of made sense to continue moving forward with them. Additionally, because of the work in the hallway downstairs, they have a large portion of the building, this building already in their CAD system, so they're already kind of a couple steps ahead of perhaps other firms, and like I said, they've been on this job for a while, I believe they also did the covered parking lot, so it just kind of made sense to keep some consistency going forward with the design of this particular project for the City Hall renovation project.
Any questions? Okay, so I'd like to make them, oh, sorry. Alderman Currielli?
Yeah, I have a question, didn't we have to cut our CIP budget by a million and a half? How does this fit in with that?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so the projects, excuse me, that we cut this year during the budget cycle was the streetlights on Irving Park, and then the other half of Middle that ComEd's not going to repair when they, when they do the power project. So, I guess, fortunately, when we did that, when we did that, this was not one of the projects that was, was in that cut list. So for right now, based on the way the CIP is built, this design scope is still in there, as is some of the construction costs for next fiscal year. So the way this would work, in theory, is we would work on the design, preliminary pricing between FGMA and Frederick Quinn. They would get that to us hopefully by Thanksgiving, let's say, where we would have that, be able to build that into the CIP. We would then look to work on bidding this out in the spring, with construction likely next fall. So, we're looking at about 18 months out for construction. They advised that if we do in the spring, looking for summer, a lot of the school districts and, and other places will probably bid their stuff out in the fall, so we'd kind of be a little bit behind from a timing standpoint. So that's why we're kind of doing it this way. Look to get pricing, preliminary pricing by the fall, bid it out in the spring for construction, the following, the following fall, fall, winter.
Follow-up?
Different question. Is this a need-to-do or a nice-to-do project? When we looked at the police department, they were, their place was pretty shabby and really needed the work. Is it the same case here, or I, there's been no tours that I'm aware of of this, we need to do this, because it's really rundown?
Director Wilson?
I'll answer as the, what, 20 employees that work in this office, and not answering as myself. Yes, it needs to be done. At this point, this is the only facility that hasn't been renovated. You have the north plant, you have Public Works brand-new, PD's effectively brand-new. This building, to the best of our knowledge, hasn't been touched since it was built in the late 90s. I forgot. I apologize, I didn't look at the plaque before I came up. So, speaking as the consensus of the employee group that works in this building, yes, it needs to get done. I'm not speaking as myself or the manager, I'm speaking for the, the rest of the employed population.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, so when we did the other side, we did find some issues. We had to correct them. I know they swept this building on this side. As long as the, the paper stays on the walls, you know, you don't have to worry about any mold or anything potentially, but let's face it, it's kind of need to get done, just to say. There, there's issues on this side of the building. I mean, we saw downstairs, we had to redo that wall from the lobby to the building department. There's issues. We need to start looking at it.
Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, so is this more cosmetic, or is it going to be some functionality corrections? I guess would be the best way.
Director Wilson?
I'll let the manager answer.
Mr. Murm?
Mostly cosmetic-type fixes. I believe that any room configurations would be probably the room we're sitting in, along with executive session, and the underutilized, misorganized storage room in the back that's inaccessible. So I would say, in here, probably some changes. Out there, probably not. Just modernizing and whatnot. So in here, probably those.
And what, what does modernizing look like? I mean, we just started to staple it up. As long as you don't touch the paper on the wall. I mean, we've had environmental issues throughout the years, moisture issues, mold issues. Doesn't make sense to me if we're going to come in here and do some work to just paint it, right? So, that's why I, I just want to make sure that we're addressing the issues.
Yes.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so, excuse me, um, yeah, I guess I was a little cagey when I said...
Who am I talking to now?
Oh, uh, just back to finance director.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I guess I was a little cagey when I said FGMA, knew what to expect. Yeah, in, in their scope, and, and part of the design scope, is anticipating when we remove the wallpaper and go to replace the windows, that there's going to be mold around a lot of them. And some of the exposed aggregate joints are going to have issues that are going to need to be addressed. So the scope, to the greatest extent possible, again, based on lessons learned from the other side of the building, is, is accounting for what they expect to find of a similar nature that they found over there.
Thank you.
Mayor, please.
Brad, I would also imagine we're gonna, all the computer wiring, because I, I heard of all the great stuff we had over in the police department. I'm, I'm going to imagine it's the same nonsense on this side of the building that's going to have to be taken care of as well, right? We're, it's not just a paint job. This is going to be some work.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so when they, when they redid the wiring for the police department, they did run the pipe and the base cabling to this side of the building in anticipation of the, the rewiring being done. You may recall during the CIP time that we need to upgrade the FOB system. We're working on getting a quote for that now. We did account for that in the budget outside of the scope. So, yeah, so the, the FOB system, like I said, that's outside of the scope, but that is looking to get done hopefully this fiscal year. The rewiring of the building, like I said, they already put the, the new cabling on this side to tap into. We're actually already starting to discuss with Director Stenson on what that's going to look like when we do that as well. So, yeah, so again, a lot of the upgrades, fire alarm, the fire panel, fire system, alarm system is going to need to be upgraded when this side of the building is done as well. So, yeah, there's, there's some, some code updates that we're going to have to do, as well as, I think we're saying cosmetic, because a lot of the stuff, if it's behind the walls, you're not going to see per se. But, yeah, we're going to do the, the cosmetic stuff, and then also the, the technology and the public health and safety issues as well.
Mr. Murm?
I was also going to say, we save the easiest for last. We don't anticipate it taking as long as Public Works and the police department's side, because those were more intensive modernization projects. This will be done in quite a bit time shorter than those projects. So we're looking forward to getting in and getting out very quickly.
Alderman Artwood?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Back now?
The FGMA design proposal.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. And the final item is City Hall interior renovations, FQC Construction Management.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so this was second, because if the first one didn't get passed, then there's no need for this. So they would work with FGMA on the architectural design elements, whatnot. And then, much like we did with the Public Works project, we would bid out each trade, and then they would be overseeing the construction phase of, of this project. So, again, it's going to, FGMA designs it, whatnot, then they're kind of, I guess in theory, the easiest way to say it is they're going to pass it off to FQC, who's then going to oversee it being done. Obviously, they work, they work together throughout the entire process, but it'll be FGMA heavy on the front end, FQC heavy on the back end.
Thank you. Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, that was where my question was going to go. What, what is FQC's part in this? So they're going to do some exploratory and be economically modeling what Fred, what FGMA is coming up with to create the budget. That's their piece?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, on the front end, that's correct. They'll work on with, with the design elements. And then, yeah, then they'll do the, the cost estimations.
So this just gets us up to the point of proposal?
Like, the $10,000.
Correct.
Yes. Then you may recall with the Public Works project, when they did all of the bids, then there was the agreement with Frederick Quinn for, because then I think, Jack, they're all your subs, right?
They become our subs.
Is it up here?
And once the board...
Okay. Yeah, so instead of all of the contractors being the city's subcontractors, they're Frederick Quinn subcontractors. Yeah, and so, and then there would be the separate agreement with Frederick Quinn then, based on the, if you had the agreement based on the percentage of the, the project cost. So, yeah, this $10,000 gets us to that pre-construction, pre-bid point. And then after the, the bid, then there would be a subsequent agreement with Frederick Quinn for the...
Build outside.
The build outside of it, yeah.
Follow-up?
I'll make a motion to approve the FQC Construction Management proposals.
Second?
Already seconded.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Woman Ames?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered for future meetings are none listed. Does anybody have anything to add? Are none? I'd like to make a motion.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.